Storytelling and that ability to explain experiences, building the communication skills they need for self advocacy as they grow. And with a lot of the games that you see on the marketplace, there's a really beautiful connection that can be created where adults and kids are playing together in an experience that's not about instruction or correction, but just a shared experience and a bond that's created for trust and openness as they grow.
And when can we really start to look for the mesh certification?
By next holiday season, we should have products that have a mesh certification that are evidence-based reviewed products.
That's Rachel Harmuth from Ravensburger Toys. We also have been speaking with Dr. Deborah Gilboa. Together, they formed a task force to help promote toys that foster mental, emotional health. There's a new acronym, mesh, that we're all going to be hearing. Dr. G. Rachel, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you're listening to Here and Now.
Next time on The World, Israel has been firing across its northern border into Lebanon, responding to rocket and missile attacks from Hezbollah. The militant group is backed by Iran and is also a major political party in Lebanon.
Hezbollah is here to stay. It's going to become more and more part of the Lebanese state identity, whether we like it or not.
Understanding Hezbollah, next time on The World.
You can hear The World Monday through Thursday at 3 on Radio IQ. Support for Radio IQ comes from Bay Diesel, now Bay Power Solutions. Same company, new name, celebrating 41 years. The distributor for Generac Industrial Power throughout Virginia and southeast West Virginia. More at baypowersolutions.com.
Funding for Here and Now comes from the listeners of WBUR Boston and your NPR station. From MathWorks, creators of MATLAB and Simulink software for technical computing and model-based design. MathWorks, accelerating the pace of discovery in engineering and science. Learn more at mathworks.com. And Staples, with supplies and services to get business done, no matter where it gets done, from ink and toner cartridges to technology like laptops and networking accessories. More at Staples stores or staples.com.
It's Here and Now, and after tonight, we'll know the lineup for baseball's World Series. Tonight is also the NBA's season opener. The Los Angeles Lakers, led by LeBron James, will face the reigning champion Denver Nuggets. The Nuggets, a favorite to repeat as champions, will be led by star Serbian center Nikola Jokic. And another giant will make his much anticipated debut this week. Seven foot four French phenom Victor Wembanyama, Wemby, lines up for the San Antonio Spurs. Plus, the NBA is adding something it hopes will increase viewership, an in-season tournament? What? NBA columnist and Boston University lecturer A. Sharad Blakely is here. Hi, Sharad.
Hello, hello. How are you?
Well, I'm fine, I think. Let's find out about all of this that we just talked about. Start with tonight's game, a repeat of the Western Conference Finals earlier this year. The Nuggets crushed the Lakers. I can remember when there was no crushed in a sentence with the Lakers, that didn't happen. So what do you expect to happen?
Well, you know, there's not a lot you're going to draw from in terms of how this will impact the entire regular season, but certainly, you know, on the opening night for an NBA champion, getting that ring, there's a lot of adrenaline rush there, there's a lot of anxiousness to get that process over with. And for your opponent, it's incentive to go out there and really, you know, show that you're ready to take that crown for them. So I think it'll be a close game. I think it'll be a very intense game. But, you know, the storylines that we're all going to be focusing on is LeBron James in year 21, what does that look like? And can the Denver Nuggets, a team that has certainly central pieces to that championship run back together, they lost some pieces as well, guys like Bruce Brown, who are playing elsewhere now? Will they get off to the kind of start that you hoped as a defending champion you need to? Because having covered teams that won titles before, the thing, they said the only thing that's tougher than winning a championship is repeating as a champion. And it'll be interesting to see how Denver comes out.
And who else are you watching in the West briefly?
The other teams out West, certainly Phoenix Suns, with their new big three, when you add a guy like Bradley Beal, one of the top scorers in the NBA for a number of years, to a team that already has Kevin Durant and Devin Booker. Certainly, you've got to look at, those are my two favorites. And the Lakers, the team that the Nuggets are playing, the way that they have retooled their roster, I think they're going to be one of the last teams standing out West. And then there's some wild cards, like Oklahoma City has lots of young but talented players. You don't know how that's going to come together. The Wild Wild West is back.
Okay. And what in the East? Boston Celtics among the favorites, Milwaukee Bucks, Miami Heat. Who's your money on?
Right now, if I had to put money on any of those teams, I'd go with the Celtics because I look at them as, the way their roster is constructed, from really top to top six, top seven, I think, sets them slightly apart. And when the Milwaukee Bucks went out and added a guy like Dame Lillard, the Celtics, I thought, made a very shrewd chess-like move in adding Drew Holiday, who played for the Milwaukee Bucks and who will be not only spending much of his time defending Dame Lillard if they're in a playoff series, but Drew Holiday is widely considered one of the best on-the-ball defenders in the NBA. And you need a guy like that, particularly when you trade away someone like a Marcus Smart. So the Boston Celtics, I think, have a little bit more depth than the Milwaukee Bucks, but when you got a guy like Giannis Antetokounmpo, who is just phenomenal talent, and you add a guy like Dame Lillard, their pick-and-roll game is going to be exceptional.
Well, and how about Victor Wembanyama, who's with San Antonio? LeBron says he's an alien. I think, Wemby, just talk about what he's going to bring to the game.
Well, I love to hear LeBron talk about Wemby because the torch of greatness in the NBA is going to be passed from LeBron to Wemby. When you talk about a player with just out-of-this-world skills, that when you start looking around the NBA landscape and you start saying, he reminds me of this guy, that guy, you've realized there is no one that he reminds you of. His length, his size, his athleticism, the ability to put the ball on the floor to be seven foot four, he dribbles like a guard. And that is kind of scary when you've got a seven foot four inch frame. And he wants to win. And a lot of people talk about that, but when you look at the way he plays the game, he has the ability and skill set to do whatever has to be done in order for his team to win. If they need him to score, he can do that. If they need him to rebound and defend, he can do that. He is the future of the NBA.
I can't wait. I can't wait to see him. We only have about a minute and a half here. This new in-season tournament, it's got knockout rounds, lot of cash at the end for winners and losers, the players. Is this, I mean, it seems like a gimmick? What were your sense of it?
Oh, it is 100% a gimmick.
Oh, it is 100% a gimmick.
It's a gimmick. It's a money-making gimmick that the NBA realizes, because the one thing people, I think, sometimes forget about professional sports is, in its very essence, it's about entertainment. It's about providing something that folks want to gravitate towards and watch. And this tournament is another, I think, nugget in that process for the NBA. But when you talk about making lots of money, I think people forget that the NBA is trying to position itself to make a lot of money. They have a number of media rights deals coming up, and they're going to have competition for that. They want to give those who are thinking about making a run at their product as many opportunities and avenues to connect with it. For example, this tournament that we're talking about, it may very well become a one-off thing where they have a sponsor or a one particular network provide that. And so if you're the NBA, fans win, players win, and ultimately, their bottom line wins.
Well, there's a reason to watch the games instead of just waiting until the end of the season.
Absolutely, absolutely.
NBA columnist, Boston University lecturer A. Sharad Blakely, thank you as always.
No problem.
And we'll be watching with you.
Invite all who desire to stand for a moment of silence and then to remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good afternoon and welcome to our meeting for October 24, 2023. Regular meetings are held on the second and fourth Tuesday at 3:00 PM. Public hearings are held at 7:00 PM on the fourth Tuesday of each month. Deviations from this schedule will be announced. The meetings are broadcast live on RV TV Channel 3 and will be rebroadcast on Thursday at 7:00 PM and on Sunday from 10:00 AM until 5:00 PM. Board of Supervisors meetings can also be viewed online through the Roanoke County website at www.roanokecountyva.gov. Our meetings are closed captioned, so it's important for everyone to speak directly into the microphones at the podium. Individuals who require assistance or special arrangements to participate in or attend Board of Supervisors meetings should contact the clerk to the board at 540-772-2005 at least 48 hours in advance. Please turn all cell phones off or place on silent. Item A, opening ceremonies, and would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Peters?
Here.
Mr. Mahoney?
Here.
Mr. Norworth?
Here.
Mr. Radford?
Here.
Mrs. Hooker?
Here. Are there any requests to postpone, add to, or change the order of agenda? Fellow board members, any changes?
No changes.
Mr. K. Wood?
No changes, Madam Chair.
And Mr. Lubek?
No changes, Madam Chair.
Item C, Proclamations, Resolutions, Recognitions, and Awards. Item 1, proclamation declaring October 22 through 28, 2023, as Red Ribbon Week in the county of Roanoke. Adam Neal, Director, Roanoke Area Youth Substance Abuse Coalition. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. How are y'all today?
Good. And so I guess we'll go straight to the reading of the resolution, proclamation?
Proclamation declaring October 22 through October 28, 2023, as Red Ribbon Week in the county of Roanoke, whereas alcohol and other drug abuse in this nation has reached epidemic stages, and whereas it's imperative that visible unified prevention education efforts by community members be launched to eliminate the demand for drugs, and whereas the National Red Ribbon Campaign offers citizens the opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to drug-free lifestyles, no use of illegal drugs, and whereas the National Red Ribbon Campaign will be celebrated in every community in America during Red Ribbon Week, October 22 through 28, 2023, and whereas business, government, parents, law enforcement, media, medical, religious institutions, schools, senior citizens, service organization, and youth will demonstrate their commitment to healthy, drug-free lifestyles by wearing and displaying red ribbons during the week-long campaign, and whereas the county of Roanoke further encourages the citizens to participate in drug prevention education activities, not only during Red Ribbon Week, but all year long. Now, therefore, we, the Board of Supervisors of Roanoke County, Virginia, on behalf of all of its citizens, do hereby proclaim October 22 through 28, 2023, as Red Ribbon Week in Roanoke County.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So, Mr. Neal, would you like to say?
Yes. On behalf of the Roanoke Area Youth Substance Abuse Coalition, I'd like to thank you for this proclamation. And just to let everybody know, this year's theme is to be kind to your mind, and we're stressing the importance of the connection between mental health and substance abuse and substance use, and how you can take care of your health by recognizing the signs and symptoms of mental health disorders and asking for help, asking for support, and just working together and supporting each other in that throughout. And just like to say that we've had a record number of schools sign up for our contest this year, and we're really excited to see all of the work that's happening this week. And we're really proud of our teachers and schools in Roanoke County and all throughout the valley.
Mr. Neal, thank you so much for your good work. And I know, just as a former teacher, how big a deal this was in all the schools that participated in such an important message. So thank you so much. Anybody else wish to say anything at this time? We'll move on to pictures.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Jacks. You pronounced that really well.
It gets harder and harder. So the next item on the agenda is, let's see, proclamation recognizing November 2023 as National Adoption Month and November 18, 2023, as National Adoption Day in the county of Roanoke. Ms. Susan Do, Director of Social Services. Do you wish to say anything before we read the resolution or proclamation?
I do. I have a few things to just talk about specifically with Roanoke County. Thank you for letting me be here today. Just to let you know that in the state of Virginia, there are currently more than 700 children who are in foster care and who are available for adoption at this time. Since November 2022, Roanoke County Social Services has finalized adoptions for 12 children. Five of these children were adopted by a kinship home, which is a relative who applies to be a foster parent, and they get approved, and so the children are with relatives that they're familiar with. The children range in age from one to 13 years old. Five of these children were, sorry, two of these children were siblings in this group. And the average length that these children were in foster care was 1.8 years before they were adopted. Taylor Vaughn is our adoption worker. She was not here today because she had a hearing in Roanoke City for a finalized adoption. This young man had been in foster care for four and a half years, so I told her that was more important than being here today. So our official meeting, our adoption celebration, is November 18 at Andrew Lewis Middle School. Hope you can all join us. It's a great day to celebrate this tremendous occasion.
It's an incredibly great work, and Sue, we appreciate the good things that you do. We're all celebrating National Adoption Week. Ms. Jacks, would you like to read the proclamation, please?
We also have a brief video. Do you want to share that first, or do you want to wait till?
Sure, we can do the video first.
Okay. If she can make it work, we're going to try.
That was great. Ms. Jacks, would you please read the proclamation?
Proclamation declaring the month of November 2023 as National Adoption Month in the county of Roanoke, whereas families can provide love and security for children, and many children wait for forever families, and whereas children who need forever families, maybe young or young adults of any heritage and may have special needs, and whereas adoption gives children a loving family in which to grow, and whereas many families in Roanoke Valley have chosen adoption as a way to create or enlarge their families, and whereas adoptive families in the Roanoke Valley are recognized and congratulated for their commitment to children and to children's rights to loving and secure homes, and whereas National Adoption Day, which will be held on November 18, 2023, is sponsored by a coalition of national partners to draw special attention to foster children, waiting for forever families, and to celebrate all loving families who adopt. Now, therefore, we, the Board of Supervisors of Roanoke County, Virginia, do hereby proclaim and recognize the month of November 2023 as National Adoption Month throughout the county of Roanoke. And further by this proclamation, we give notice to our citizens to celebrate the important role adoption plays in our society, and call upon the citizens of Roanoke County to observe this month with appropriate programs and activities that honor adoptive families.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Jacks. And Sue, I just want to say that I have gone to those court services before, and oh my goodness, it is, if that video wasn't touching the court ceremony, it is. It is an amazing thing. Any of my board members want to say anything at this time? Yes, sir?
Yeah. So adoption really warms your heart when it happens. My wife and I were close to doing that, and the baby was stillborn, so we were really close. But, you know, thank God for families that can adopt, and it is important, and I'm glad we're recognizing it.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Yes.
Adoption is very important. On a personal note, our oldest son and his wife adopted a young girl last year. They live in New York, not Virginia, but they adopted a wonderful young girl who's now part of our family, and it's great. But they had a, the young girl was in foster care in Massachusetts, and my son and daughter-in-law are in New York, and they will tell me horror stories about trying to work through the legal process of two different agencies in two different states and trying to accomplish that.
It is a challenge, yes.
It is challenging. But they accomplished it, and they finalized the adoption about a year ago, 13 months ago. It's great.
Wonderful.
This is important.
I know that my husband and I fostered for a period of time, and it was probably the best thing we've ever done. I think if there's no other words, have a clerk. Item D, new business. Resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement with the Roanoke City Allegheny Health District adopting a joint rabies exposure response plan. Mr. Peter Lubek, county attorney.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. During the 2010 General Assembly session, House Bill 621 was passed enacting a new section 3.2 hyphen 6521.1 of the Code of Virginia. This section requires the local health director and the governing body of each locality to adopt a plan to control and respond to the risk of rabies. And in a recent meeting with Mr. K. Wood, Dr. Cynthia Morrow, the director of the Roanoke City Allegheny Health District, shared a copy of a proposed rabies exposure response plan and proposed that the board enter into an agreement with the health district adopting this plan. A copy of the proposed agreement and the response plan were included in the board's meeting materials for today, and the plan sets forth procedures regarding how our local animal control officers should respond to instances of potential rabies exposure. This plan has been shared with Chief Poindexter, who is also here present today, and he did not share any concerns with it. It is staff's recommendation that the board adopt the resolution authorizing the execution of the agreement and the adoption of the plan. Be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions of staff? Yes, Mr. Mahoney?
Mr. Lubek, maybe a comment and a question. As I read the memorandum of understanding, and I'm specifically looking at pages 17 and 18 in our agenda that addresses the responsibility of our local animal control, it looks like we do all of that work already. Is there anything new that I'm overlooking? Because I had thought previously of the 12 different activities involved. I thought our animal control officers already did all of those things.
And sir, it is my suspicion that they do. Perhaps Chief Poindexter, if I could put you on the spot? He has confirmed from the back that you are correct, sir.
The only question I have is, under item number seven, where it says, "Do not disclose the identity of any victim of an animal bite or rabies exposure except to healthcare provider or an official of the local health district." If, if the process does not work as anticipated and a court intervention would be required, would that provision prevent our animal control officer from going to court and then issuing the appropriate witness subpoena? You see where I'm going?
I do. I do. And that is a very good question.
I don't want the agreement to prevent a possible enforcement action if it reaches that point. I know that's a fairly rare situation, but I just didn't want that to prevent being able to get the appropriate witness subpoena that would be necessary for that kind of action.
And, Mr. Mahoney, I think that is an excellent question, and I think the way that we would handle that is to file it, well, to have a conversation with the court, that this is a filing that does contain potential health information, and ask that it be kept under seal or somehow otherwise managed so that it would not be available to viewing by the public. I think that that's what I would propose to do.
If there's no other questions, is there a motion?
I would move the approval of the proposed resolution under item D1, authorizing the execution of this memorandum of understanding.
And is there a second?
Second.
Would the clerk please call the roll? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes. Item E, first reading of ordinances, emergency ordinance approving applications to the Literary Fund for Loans and Providing Initial Approval of the Issuance of Bonds by the County of Roanoke, Virginia as Evidence of Loans. And due to time restraints for this project, it is requested that the second reading be dispensed with upon an affirmative vote of four fifths of the members of the board and that this matter be deemed an emergency measure pursuant to Section 18.04 of the Roanoke County Charter. Ms. Lori Gearhart, Director of Finance and Management Services, welcome.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. The ordinance before you requests authorization to approve only the applications to the Literary Fund for the issuance of bonds. As background, on April 11, 2023, the board approved a resolution of a memorandum of understanding between the county and schools regarding joint capital funding. The MOU references a literary loan as a component of the financing for the construction of a new career and technical education center. The Virginia Literary Fund has favorable interest rates, so it has been recommended to the county submit applications for not only the CTE Center but also for the renovations of the Glen Cove and W. E. Condeth Elementary School. The school board approved their resolution to submit the applications at their October 18 meeting. The school's deadline to submit the applications to the Literary Fund is November 16, 2023. The next county board meeting is not until November 15, so we are requesting waiving the second reading of the ordinance upon a four-fifths vote today. I did ask Ms. Peterson, the Director of Finance, to be here to answer additional questions. Unfortunately, she was not able to attend today. But with that, staff does recommend approval of the first reading of the ordinance and waiver of the second reading upon a four-fifths vote of the ordinance to approve applications to the Virginia Literary Fund.
I'm going to ask one quick question and hand it off to my peers if they have any additional questions, but when I was reading through the materials, I saw "Conde" specifically mentioned. Did it mention all of the schools? Did it mention all three?
There was three applications.
Okay. Okay, and I noticed that the 3% was a very good, very good rate. Any other questions, or staff?
Just a comment, Madam Chair. Nothing that probably hadn't already said, but I wanted to say it for the record. The Literary Fund only was about $50 million. Until two years ago, the General Assembly increased to $200 million each year in the biennium. That's good. It wasn't used that much before for the purpose of low-cost loans, probably because A, people didn't think about it, or B, they didn't understand it, or C, it wasn't a lot of money. Now, asking for all three separately is probably a strategic move on our part, but I will tell you that since so many schools were not lucky to get the school construction grants, and we don't know how many because the Board of Education wouldn't share the transparency, which is still something to wonder. In fact, I would hope that in this case, the transparency of all the applicants will be shared. And so, that totaled $75 million between the three applications of the 200. I would like to believe we're going to get all three, but I think if we get one, we should celebrate that. And so, I think this is an excellent result, and thank you for your dialogue over the weekend on this subject. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions for staff? Yes, Mr. Peters?
So, for clarification, the loan rate on this is 3.7%?
The loan rate is, it's compared to the index rate, which is 3.74%. However, it's the lesser of the index rate or the composite index of the locality. At this time, we anticipate that based on our composite index, if we were fortunate enough to get the loan, we feel like we'll get 3%, but at worst-case scenario, it would be at 3.7%, 74%.
So, our standard bonds that we normally purchase for this type of construction, what are those rates today? Because I know in our financial policy, we only go up to 6%.
Correct. I don't know the exact rate, but it's around, somewhere around the 4% range.
Okay, so we still got a buffer. Mr. North and I had that conversation over the weekend. I said, you know, I'm getting a little antsy from being in the banking world. Your rates keep going up, mortgage rates are now over 8%. We've committed to do all this, and now I'm sitting back going, you know, are we going to bump up against that 6% bonded rate that we've got in our financial policy? And then in turn, what would that mean for these projects? So, I just want a clarification on that. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Absolutely.
Just one addendum to my comments. This is an interesting comparison, this Literary Fund with the Construction Fund. The Construction Fund was overseen by the Board of Education. I don't know if they got a role in the Literary Fund, but they're the ones that took composite index and stress level, and then they added 11 questions that knocked us out of consideration, along with Franklin County and some other counties around the state. Not good, but many come along with this application, and all they do is look at your composite index. Well, our composite index without those 11 questions would have said we should get 20% of the cost of construction, or 16 million, which we're still not going to give up on going forward. But I just find that, you know, different pots of money have different criteria. No uniformity and no transparency whatsoever like smart scale and transportation. I wish the state of Virginia would appoint a joint legislative committee to make transparency more consistent across the Commonwealth and all these departments and projects. Maybe one day before time runs out in this world, that'll happen, but good work. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Is there a motion?
Motion.
And so, this motion is to adopt the ordinance as an emergency measure with four fifths vote to waive the second reading. Is that you, Jason? You want to be second?
Yes, I'll be second.
Mr. Radford, would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes. Item F is appointments. Is there any board member that has an appointment that has not yet been given to the clerk?
Yes.
Okay. That's exciting.
What was that? We have an opening on Roanoke County's Economic Development Authority, and one of the Cape Spring representatives on the authority, Mr. Stephen Anderson, he and I talked, I think it was last month, and he indicated to me that because of him selling his business and some family issues, I think their grandchildren live someplace outside Charlottesville. They might be leaving the area, which would be a shame. But Mr. Anderson indicated that he was not seeking reappointment. So, I would like to recommend to the board that we appoint Jeremy Carroll. Jeremy is a local attorney with Spillman Thomas, and he and his wife live at 5383 Silver Fox Road, and I would request the board's consideration of appointing Mr. Carroll to the Roanoke County Economic Development Authority.
And so, what's protocol at this point?
Add it as G8.
Yes.
Is it an agenda?
Add that to G8?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And so, let's see, so is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda? Or, yeah, the consent agenda. Consent agenda, item G, is there any board member that wishes to remove any item or add any item? We have now added an item. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the amended G8.
And is there a second?
Second.
And would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes. Item H is citizen comments and communications. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
No, ma'am.
Okay, we'll move on to reports. Is there a motion to receive and file the following reports?
I move the motion, Madam Chair.
And is there a second?
Second.
And would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes. Item J is a work session. We have a work session to review the Board of Supervisors, the status of the county of Roanoke's ongoing capital improvement plan, CIP, projects as of June 30, 2023, with Ms. Lori Gearhart, Director of Finance and Management Services, and Steve Elliott, Budget Administrator, will now recess to the third floor for the work session and return at 7:00 p.m. for the evening session. Thank you.
More global news is still coming your way this hour. You're listening to the world.
Here is your radio.